Good afternoon. We would like to welcome everyone to the June 7th, 2021 Mesa City Council meeting. At the conclusion of this meeting, we will also be having a special council meeting. I will note that all of our council are present with Ms. Spillsbury being present virtually online. At this council meeting, we're taking comments both over the phone and over the Internet. You can find multiple ways to participate in this meeting on the first page of the council agenda. Additionally, if you would like to speak, you should submit a blue card one hour before the meeting. Again, you can find that information on the first page of the agenda and at mesasaz.gov/ bluecard. We will begin our meeting this afternoon with an invocation offered by Mr. Paul Langness with the Local Spiritual Assembly of the Bahais of Mesa. Welcome, Mr. Langness. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. Please proceed, Mr. Langness.
The Local Spiritual Assembly of Mesa greets you. We know that you do important work, so we've chosen a prayer that was revealed specifically for the governments of America. "O thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. O God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees even as it has aspired to material degrees and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. O God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestow." Abdal Baha.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you again, Mr. Langness, for the wonderful opening prayer. The first item on our agenda is to take action on the consent agenda. This time, we'd invite Mr. Kevin Christopher Ford to read the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests; in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for residents in 941 West Grove Avenue. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Buddha's Brew Coffee Cafe, 710 East Main Street. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for Grab and Go, 9202 East Main Street. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for Home Two Suites, 5643 East Longboat Parkway. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for Pick and Go, 1530 North Country Club Drive. Item 4A, act on contract to purchase audiovisual equipment for the Mesa Police Department. Item 4B, act on liquor license application to purchase -- act on contract to purchase 24 replacement lockers for the Mesa Police Department. Item 4C, act on contract to purchase one 3D scanner for the Mesa Police Department. Item 4D, act on contract to purchase an officer training simulator for the Mesa Police Department. Item 4E, act on two-year term contract with three years renewal options for household hazardous materials, facility operational support for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Item 4F, act on dollar limit increase to the term contract for the streetlight monitoring system for the Transportation Department. Item 4G, act on contract to purchase one compact track loader for the Transportation Department. Item 4H, act on three-year term contract with two years renewal options for spray marking paint for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4I, act on contract to purchase a total organic carbon analyzer and auto sampler for the Water Resources Department. Item 4J, act on three-year term contract with two years renewal options for water and wastewater treatment pumps, equipment, parts, and services for the Water Resources Department. Item 4K, act on contract to purchase a TKN analyzer and approve a term contract for supplies and annual maintenance for the Water Resources Department. Item 4L, act on three-year term contract with two years renewal options for technical retrocommissioning of city buildings for citywide departments. Item 4M, act on contract for the studios at Mesa City Center, third guaranteed maximum price. Item 5A, act on resolution vacating a portion of rideaway and extinguishing certain easements for property located at 950 East Main Street to accommodate development of Valleywise Health Center. Item 5B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to accept, expend, and distribute grant funds from HUD's Continuum of Care Shelter Plus Care Grant to provide rental assistance and related administrative services and casework and supportive services funded through Save the Family. Item 5C, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment Number 2 of the Telecommunications License Agreement with Teleport Communications America to allow for two additional five-year renewal terms for the continued use of the public rights of way for a telecommunications network. Item 5D, act on resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an application letter to the Foreign Trade Zones Board to reorganize Mesa Foreign Trade Zone Number 221 under the Alternative Site Framework. Item 5E, act on resolution designating the Chief Financial Officer with the authority to submit the city's 2021-2022 Fiscal Year Expenditure Limitation Report to the Arizona Auditor General on behalf of the city council as required by state statute. Item 5F, act on resolution adopting a pension funding policy and accepting the employer's share of assets and liabilities under the Public Safety Personnel Retirement as required by state statute. Item 5G, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a First Amendment to the agreement to purchase real property and escrow instructions and revised development agreement with EV Development for development of property generally located at the southeast corner of Pepper Place and Robeson for a mixed-use project. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance regarding ANX 21-00095, annexing property located north of McDowell Road and west of Lehigh Road. This was initiated by the applicant. Item 6B, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 21-00089 for property located north of McDowell Road and east of the 202 Red Mountain Freeway, rezoned with a planned area development overlay to allow development of a single-residence subdivision. Item 6C has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 6D, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 20-00786 for property located west of Crisman Road on the south side of Southern Avenue, a rezone with a planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for a multiple-residence development. Item 6E, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 20-00872 for property located north of Elliot Road on the east side of Power Road, modification to an approved planned area development overlay, rezone, and site plan review. Item 6F, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 19-00507 for property located north of Warner Road on the east side of Power Road, rezoned with a planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for development of a large-scale recreation department. And item 6G, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON 21-00050 for property located north of Baseline Road on the west side of Sossman Road, rezoned with a planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for development of a multiple-residence development. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mosley, thank you for pinching today for Ms. Mickelson. Do we have any requests to speak on any items on the consent agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I see we do have a motion made by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Luna, to approve the consent agenda. Please cast your votes. Councilmember Spillsbury, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda will be then hearing or considering Item 6C, which was removed from the consent agenda. Item 6C is introduction of an ordinance and setting June 21st, our next council meeting, as the date of the public hearing on the ordinance. This is, again, a zoning ordinance dealing with the 2,200 block of North Center Street on the west side, located north of McKellick Road and east of Country Club Drive, rezoning from ag to light industrial to semi-public PS. And this will allow for the development of a public facility, specifically a sports complex, sports fields for the city of Mesa. I know we do have some requests to speak on this item. Ms. Mosley, how many folks have requested to speak on this?
We have 20 requests to speak on this item, one that's called in and then the rest to be read aloud.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and hear from the person who's live and then we'll ask you to read the other comments.
All right, so first we have Morgan Roberts, and she is on the line.
Ms. Roberts, if you're there, please -- you have three minutes.
Hi, so I am off of McKellick-Lehigh -- or sorry, Mesa Drive and Lehigh Road, just past the corner. And I am severely concerned from changing it from agricultural to industrial, just because Lehigh is there in Mesa to preserve the agricultural community. It has been there from the start, and for that to change, it would change the community as a whole and would also change the city in a drastically dire way. And I personally feel like it would ruin the feel of the city, the feel of the community, and it would just change everything in a horrible, horrible way. And so, in order to change it from agricultural to industrial, I feel like it should be a concern of the community first, and we as a community have not been talked to at all. And we haven't had any vote in anything. And for us to just get completely unrepresented by our council member and by our mayor is severely disheartening in our government, and I feel that the agricultural community should be represented fairly. And since we're such a small community, we don't. Agriculture is such a huge part of not only Mesa but Arizona that it needs to be kept. Not history needs to be kept. There is no reason for any of it to go away. There's so little left to preserve that every little bit of everything needs to stay. And so, that's why I think there should be no reason to change it from agricultural to industrial, especially for the reasons that they are not keeping it agricultural. I think that the reasons are completely wrong and that they should not change. And that is my conclusion.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Mosley, why don't you proceed with reading the comments that have been submitted?
Mayor, just real quickly, just to correct, there may have been a -- just the reading that's captioned. I just want to clarify, there's -- this action is not rezoning from agriculture to light industrial. It's currently agricultural and light industrial, and it's being proposed to be rezoned to what we call PS or public slash semi-public for parks. So just to clarify --
Thank you, Mr.
I kept getting repeated, and I didn't want anybody else to think we were taking agriculture and turning it to industrial or not. It currently is portions of ag, some parts of it industrial, and we're converting it to park.
Thank you. That was -- I made a mistake when I read it. Let me reread it correctly. It says, "Rezone from agricultural AG and light industrial LI to public semi-public PS." So it's currently zoned ag and industrial, and it's being rezoned to -- for public use. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. So the first comment that I have is in opposition from Sandy Greenlee, and they say, "I own three properties within the Lehigh community, and I'm not happy with the lack of communication and lack of transparency with myself and the community. I do not want more congestion in the area, and I believe that the agricultural lifestyle should be preserved instead of forgotten. The soccer field would be an act of forgetting our agricultural history and ruining the That's one of the short ones. Next, we have Obi Dunn, who's opposing the item. He says, "Let me be clear. We, the residents of Lehigh, do not want soccer fields in Lehigh. We don't want the lights, we don't want the noise, and we sure as shooting don't want the traffic that will be generated. The streets in that area won't be able to handle that many cars. So what's going to happen? Widen Lehigh Road? Put in an on-ramp from the 202 to Mesa Drive? Breaking the promise made to the area residents long ago? Maybe widen Mesa Drive, who knows? I don't -- I bet I'm willing to bet that if this council is involved, there will be no transparency and no community involvement, just like when this zoning change was made. There are much better, more suitable properties for these soccer fields. The Ellsworth Fields on the corner of Brown and Center already have the needed infrastructure, i.e. roads, et cetera, and it is close to the current athletic fields with the accompanying lights and noise. But wait, then-council member Mark Freeman wouldn't be able to continue to farm the property and continue to profit from them. Maybe he should have recused himself." Next, we have William King in opposition. "This is ridiculous. The Lehigh area has always been known as a rural agricultural area with large lots and little traffic. It's why I bought property here. This use of this property will ruin the Lehigh area as we know and love it. Traffic will increase to the point it will be unmanageable and endanger the lives of the youth and children who live and play in the area, not to even mention the lights and noise levels destroying the peace and quiet we value in Lehigh. Just say no. I have to believe that A, there are better uses for that land than soccer fields, and B, there's better -- land that is better or more suited to put soccer fields, like maybe that field on the southeast corner of Brown and Center." Next, we have Kim Warden. "I took a packet to the mayor and city councilmen a few weeks ago. Inside had the majority of the Lehigh community's signatures opposed to the soccer fields. Also included was that there is over 500 horses in our unique equestrian area. That's not including cows, goats, chickens, and other farm animals. We moved here for that reason. Lehigh is the founding area of Mesa, and you as a city want to take that away from us. Would the city put all these soccer fields in Dreamland Village? No, I don't think so, because it would not fit into the area for seniors, just like soccer fields do not fit into a rural area with horses. It's too dangerous for the riders and horses. Why isn't the city worrying about their citizens instead of making the almighty dollar? This is not a park that you can take your children down to play on at any time. The city is making you pay to use it and reserve it. Lehigh residents don't mind having a passive park with playground equipment, horse pass, Ramadas, et cetera, not a sports complex with 100-foot lights and open until 10:30 at night. The traffic would increase and take away our unique rural way of living. This is not including the noise and lights our councilmen told us to come up with several alternative things that could go in that 24-acre spot. We, as a community, came up with a complete drawing of an equestrian park, which included a couple arenas with solar panels on top, which would pay for itself. Mesa does not have rodeo grounds. This equestrian park fits into our unique area. Our 4-H kids have to go to Queen Creek to show their animals. Why not Mesa? Mesa Schools' FFA groups would not have a place to work with their animals. Legacy Park out by Gateway Airport will be opening soon with 30 to 50 soccer fields, so why is it necessary to put these in an area that the community does not want it? The city created a need for soccer fields with their deal with Riverview. Why does Lehigh community have to carry the burden on our shoulders? There is a need for an equestrian park also." And then Cindy Kincaid. "This is a railroad job that we have been screaming from our rooftops. We have met multiple times as a community, and the vast majority of people in Lehigh do not want this, yet it is still getting shoved down our throats. This project will have a major and negative impact on our very special community of Lehigh. I would like to repeat again, no, 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 do we want this. When Lehigh was annexed into Mesa many years ago, we were promised that nothing like this would ever befall us, yet here we are. Mark Freeman and our community leaders have failed to represent our community in this. This process needs to be started fresh with transparency and community involvement." And we have Jillian Hetzel. "I have lived in Lehigh since 1971, so I have been privy to its growth since. The rural oasis of unique historic value to Mesa would be enhanced by an earlier proposal of a Lehigh equestrian FFA and 4-H field and not by a sports complex-soccer field. Please consider the sports complex proposal. Please reconsider, sorry. It would lead to more dangerous traffic situations in this rural setting." Mary Martin Priest. "Rzoning of agricultural land to public semi-public is not acceptable. This is agricultural land and needs to remain agricultural land. This is not the appropriate place for your soccer fields. It is deplorable the manner in which the soccer field situation has evolved. A community who does not want soccer fields is being forced by the government to comply. Once again, government has overstepped their bounds. Soccer fields, in my mind, do not qualify for eminent domain or the rezoning of public semi-land. The plans dictate specific use for a limited group that does not qualify as a public facility. According to the last meeting in which I listened to the planning committee, residents of the area are still going to have to pay to use this facility and would most likely not be able to do -- not be able to due to the clubs who have priority in the use. As a side note, did you really complete a thorough analysis and survey of the area and the need? If you did, you would have found this is not the correct course of action. Rzoning is not the right choice. Why did you remove soccer fields in a few miles away just to add them back into an area who does not want them? You had soccer fields. There are other properties available, which you have the infrastructure to accommodate your need. The lack of transparency and failure to communicate is wildly apparent in the city of Mesa. When the bond measure is so vague and buried multiple pages into a document that the community does not even know the bond measure is referencing their area, that is a problem. When the Lehigh community is concerned about voicing their issues and opinions with the measure due to fears of retaliation, again, that is a problem. When we tried to participate in the meeting several months ago to voice our concerns, the concerns and questions were not addressed, while the questions that were answered were provided a canned answer, that is a problem. Regretfully, I believe, the city of Mesa Council has failed the Lehigh community and apparently many other communities within the city limits. Appointed government officials are supposed to govern according to the will of their community, not the other way around. This is supposed to be a democratic society, not a dictatorship. It is truly sad that the city of Mesa is despicable -- is a despicable dictatorship. Rzoning the area mentioned above is not the correct course of action. Find another location to complete your soccer fields." Kimberly Van Riper. "There are still very real concerns regarding traffic impact on the Lehigh community as a result of the decision to place a sports field so nearby. This facility is designed to draw traffic into an area that has about 500 horses, many of which are ridden down the streets daily. The ingress and egress for this park is designed to move down Lehigh Road or Center Street only. The community of Lehigh has voiced repeated concerns and asked repeatedly for concessions as well as asked for strong communication throughout the process, yet have not been informed as the process moves forward nor have had any requests fulfilled. A guarded horse trail along Center, dead-ending Lehigh Road at Center, a full-block wall to protect the gentlemen surrounded by the project, traffic studies prior to park planning are all left unanswered or simply dismissed. Consideration of a park suited for the Lehigh community or even placement of a cemetery have all been dismissed. Petitions, surveys, and many community meetings are the attempt to communicate to the city the reality of increased impact and the consequences to the area. The future implications of increased traffic in Lehigh extends far beyond the safety of horse riders and livestock. Lehigh is unique, and it would be a welcome act for the city of Mesa to engage in great actions that preserve the rich heritage and way of life here rather than allowing and even adding to pressures of development in the surrounding areas. The design of the Lehigh sub-area plan is to consider this fringe area for inclusion back into the Lehigh area. Instead, Lehigh has been shrinking -- has seen shrinking borders and massive loss of area since annexation. Moving forward, we implore the city council members to reexamine the wealth of heritage it has in Lehigh and actively work not only to ensure it does not disappear, but to enhance and preserve this piece of living history for future generations." Marilyn Crosby. "Since I was first made aware of this city-driven project by a sign posted by a neighbor, I have attempted to work with neighbors to find solutions that would benefit the community and the city. I don't mind doing so, but I do feel this should also be the job of those we have elected and those that work for the city. When I met with the city staff to discuss the project, it became clear in that meeting that we were not there to discuss or work together, but for the staff to show up and verify this project is marching forward, no matter what. The Mesa general plan indicates that throughout the city of Mesa, there is a general consensus of residents that feel the city of Mesa does not value or consider the sense of place of neighborhoods. This is another failure in that regard. In my efforts over the past year, I have spoken to many individuals, both in my community and throughout Mesa. Through those efforts, I have found that even those who do not live in Lehigh know it, love it, and want to protect the county lifestyle of it. I acknowledge that a bond measure was passed. In doing so, I must acknowledge that the language in the bond measure was ambiguous and indicated a North Center complex. This does not indicate it would be abutted to Lehigh. All individuals I have talked to thought that it was to be placed near the other sports complexes and located at the center of Center and Brown. I have spoken to individuals that submitted five possible sites for the complex when the bond measure was passed. The city has confirmed on multiple occasions no other locations were considered. We know that financials have been unclear on this existing site. Of other locations -- if other locations been considered, better financial decision could be made and compared. I have spoken to several individuals that have made public records requests over the past year. None of them have received any records that were requested on this proposed project or others. The same is true of phone calls not being returned. The community was not made aware of the zoning hearings, even though we were -- there were residents checking the city website three times a week looking for it. Upon discussions with other Mesa residents, they gave example after example of how their community was similarly treated. All of these examples articulate a lack of working with the community, the appearance of a heavy-handed governmental approach, and a total lack of transparency. It is my firm opinion that the city should do the right thing, pause this project, consider all locations that have been presented, and work with the neighborhoods. The lack of open communication is apparent and permanently damaging." Okay, now for the support. All right, Josh Brown says, "I live on Lehigh Road with children, and this would be a great outlet for them and their friends to play on. We would rather have playing fields versus apartment buildings on high-density or high-density Delight Clark says, "Federal funds were used to create soccer fields that have been repurposed but not replaced. Our hope was that replacement fields might be created in roughly the same neighborhood. Creating a public space would keep this land from being sold to developers and used for what we hope it would be used for." Kirk Musgrave says, "I am in favor of the current plan to develop this proposed property as community-use soccer fields. Such use will benefit my family directly as well as many others who have expressed their support to me. Some residents in the area wish to see it used as an equestrian facility, which would be nice for a few. However, many more would benefit from the soccer field plan. Please move forward with the current proposal." Tiffany Jennings says, "I fully support the sports fields on Center Street in Lehigh. Our family is very excited to have this wonderful resource in our neighborhood." Christopher Jones says, "I am in full support of the sports fields on Center Street in approving all necessary zoning changes to start facilitating its development. These fields will be a wonderful addition to our area and community. It is wonderful knowing that this land will be used to support outdoor activities rather than to be developed into homes or worse businesses that we have to have no say in. We have control here and would not want any other way. It will be constantly monitored, secured, and cared for by the great staff of the city of Mesa, an absolute win for the Lehigh community." W.D. Monte. "I favor the zoning change with the understanding that the public facility to be built are soccer fields that have been promised to replace the fields at Riverview. These are badly needed currently. West Mesa young people have to travel routinely to the fields on North Greenfield. This limits participation, and we look forward to fields back in District 1." Lynn Burnham. "I support the change of zoning on Item 6C to a public-use space that could be used for future ballfields and open space for this part of the city." Stephanie Wright says, "Dear Mayor and council members, I have been a member of the Mesa Grand Community Alliance since its inception as part of the 1993 City of Mesa's Mesa Speaks Initiative of Building a Healthier Mesa. Over the years, I and many others in this organization have worked with several council members, past and present, trying to do what's necessary in order to acquire a piece of ground large enough on the west side of Mesa to replace the fields built with the federal funds that were removed from Riverview years ago. Now that the site has been acquired, we are at the point where the lands needs -- the land needs rezoning in order to proceed. I heartily support the effort to get the zoning change on this parcel to keep it as open space so that residents can eventually move forward with planning for the site. Thank you, Stephanie Wright." I had two others in support that did not wish to have their comments read, and that is all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Council discussion, I know, I will note that we had a staff presentation from both transportation and Parks and Rec in our study session that preceded this meeting, and there was some council discussion as part of that presentation as well, if the public would like to go back and look at the video of that meeting. But is there any discussion prior to the vote on this, council?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, being a council member for the Lehigh area and all of District 1, this has been a much-talked-about issue, and I see why. However, there's a lot of things have been brought up by the group. I know the mayor, myself, and other staff members met with community members in neighborhood meetings some time ago, probably over a year ago, I think it was, and I have to say, I was very taken back by the behavior of some of the residents in Lehigh. My family --" My family's lived there for over 144 years. I hate to throw out a number, however, I'm very sensitive to that. And I'm sorry, a farmer's not going to come in and farm that ground and keep it agriculture. Currently, I am a farmer. My family's farmed that long. In fact, my great-great-grandparents homesteaded that ground that we're talking about today. And it was farmed for a period of time. It sat vacant, fallow for many, many years. The city did own the five acres in front of that. And in doing so, we used some eminent domain to work with the current owners. I think we purchased that property for four, I want to pub, $4.2 million, I think is the number. I'll probably get ahead, not somewhere in there, plus, plus the five acres we own. So this is over a $5 million piece of property. And I'm thankful for past councils in pushing back other developments. I've been on the Lehigh Community Association for 16 years prior to my council election. Prior council member Dave Richens pushed back and fellow council members about large developments, apartment complexes, over 200 home, 200 apartments. Another developer wanting to put over 100 residential homes and most recently, a waste facility project coming in, wanting to buy the city's five acres. And I just could not see all the additional high-density for that area would just increase the traffic. Traffic is an issue in our community, I recognize that. However, I feel like that as staff members, we have worked hard to mitigate the equestrian user, especially on Center Street. And there's just a few equestrian users there. The people who are, have called in, I hear you. I think that the city, I do know the city has been transparent in everything it's done. It's been voter-approved and this facility will be a buffer for this area. The lighting, the noise, the traffic has all been talked about and discussed. You know, this is a sports fields. It will be youth sports. Parents, grandparents, and others will be attending games just as they do at other parks in the area. I stand ready still to work as a council member to, if, once we, once the fields are opened up and in use, we'll do traffic studies, we'll look at additional traffic mitigation issues. We've already put in speed signs and flashing signs. I forget the exact name, but it helps reduce the speed for people on Lehigh Road. And consequently, you know, the other alternatives were just not feasible. I do know that, and I know some will disagree with me, but putting an equestrian facility there will generate more traffic in our Lehigh area. And having, again, fairs and other things, it'll just drive in more traffic. And we have a special area here that these sports fields will benefit not only our area in Lehigh, but in West Mesa in replacing the fields that were taken out at Riverview. So with that, I just, you know, open up for any more comments from my colleagues, but other than that, I just want them to know that I live here too. I've heard your complaints and I, I get it. But it's just not going to sit vacant or fallow. And again, no farmer's going to come in and farm a $5 million piece of property. So I'll end with that.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, any other comments? I'll just echo, number one, I know Mr. Freeman has worked very hard on this and has been a zealous advocate for the Lehigh community throughout this process. I was part of this council, or I've been here for now six years, this go-around, and we have been continually fighting off development at this piece because we felt it was not consistent with the character of the Lehigh community and were committed to preserving that. So I think the, the use that we found, these soccer fields, is the best alternative that we've, that we've seen to preserve the character of Lehigh, to preserve this property and use it in a way that's consistent with, with the character of Lehigh and at the same time, achieve a real need that we have in our community. We are woefully behind in terms of meeting the demand that we have for lighted ballfields and sports fields. We could build a lot more of these and still be turning down the, the sports leagues and the teams and their very active youth sports programs that we have in our city. So, so I, I know this, not everyone will agree with this, but, but in my mind, this is a win-win accomplishing, preserving the character of Lehigh and at the same time, it's making progress on, on addressing the needs of our, of our youth sports demands in the city. So I will be happy to support this motion as well. I see that we have a motion made by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your votes. Ms. Spillsbury, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous in, in favor of the motion. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Items from Citizens Present. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We had a request, but she is not on the line.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll look forward to hearing from them at our next meeting perhaps. That concludes the items on our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. I'll note that that was a unanimous vote. We are adjourned.